All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council Special Meeting for Thursday, September 4th. I call this meeting to order. If you're able to do so, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, if you could please take real call.
Yes, good evening. Airport Tim Anderson, Member Noonan Camp?
Present.
Member Prang?
Present.
Member Russell?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
Member Wright?
Present.
Mayor Sierra?
Present.
Six members present.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem should be making it, but wasn't sure exactly at what time. So there's only one item for tonight. There was a protest regarding the resolution that was passed on Monday night. So tonight, we will be hearing the protest of the resolution setting ballot title for citizen-initiated charter amendment. Do we happen to have the protester online?
I do not see that person online.
Okay. Are we, is everything working online? Just want to make sure that that's not the reason for it.
Yep, I.
Okay, so we're good? All right, so.
As of right now, I can notify you if that.
Okay. Perfect. So then I'll pass it over to Deputy City Attorney Victoria McDermott. Deputy City Attorney McDermott, I know you put together a presentation on the protest and the hearing itself, and just wanted to just go over the facts of what we decided on Monday night, and then what the process looks like for tonight. Oh. Perfect. Actually, so. We'll give one second, so. Mr. Kaplan, are you online? Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
He's definitely unmuted. I don't know why we can't hear him.
Yeah, so he's.
Mark, can you, okay.
Check it for one moment. Okay. Mr. Kaplan, are you able to hear us? Are we able to see that if he's able to? If not, I can just start with the Deputy City Attorney. Because we did get the protest. I guess the only question I have for Mr. Noah, or Mr. Kaplan, I should say, is if there's anything additional that he wants to add. Okay, so we're waiting to see if we can get the. The Zoom, or is he on Zoom? Is that what he's on?
Sorry, yes, I'm out of here.
Okay, there we are. Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. Mr. Kaplan, is there anything you want to add outside of the protest that you filed on Tuesday?
Um, no, I mean, I don't think so. I would note that I had to file it very quickly. You know, we were given a less than 24 hours essentially, because it was by 5:00 PM the next business day to file a protest. I think I, you know, made the case in my protest for why I think that short period was inappropriate. I think the, you know, the statute clearly requires, you know, a longer protest period for referred ordinances, for referenda. And it doesn't, you know, it doesn't make sense that a charter amendment, which is, you know, a bigger change, would be subject to less stringent requirements than those other things. So I think, yeah, I made the case in my protest for why I think the procedure that was followed here was not the right one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. Deputy City Attorney McDermott, I think, yeah, if we just want to go through the presentation, and then we could just ask any questions at that point regarding this process, so.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll go to the podium so I can advance those slides.
Sure.
No, there we go. Wrong clicker. So, good evening. I'm Deputy City Attorney Victoria McDermott. I'm here to present on the protest of ballot title. So tonight, council is asked to resolve a protest filed against the ballot title set by Resolution Number 14, Series 2025. As for call, this relates to a citizen-initiated home rule charter amendment on the method of city elections scheduled for the November ballot. The protest does not challenge the ballot title wording itself, but instead questions the process council used to set this title. Now, by way of background, a citizen-initiated petition was certified on August 26, requiring council to set a ballot title for the proposed amendment at its next meeting. To meet the county's September 5 certification deadline and state law requirements, council acted promptly on September 2 and set the ballot title by resolution. On September 3, a protest was filed by registered elector, Mr. Kaplan, under Section 2 of that resolution. Now, the protest doesn't claim the title misleads voters. It challenges our vehicle of putting the title on the ballot. Now, that is outside of the protest lane. The scope of protest under state law and under our municipal code established protests as a way to challenge the wording of a ballot title to ensure clarity and fairness. In this case, the protester does not dispute the title language, only the legislative process. Staff's position is that this title, that this protest, rather, falls outside the intended scope of ballot title protests and is itself procedurally defective. As for the merits of the protest, there is no ordinance requirement. This is a charter amendment, not an initiated ordinance. The charter's ordinance requirements, as cited by the protester, do not apply here. Resolution is lawful. State law told us when to act, not how. A resolution is legally sufficient. State law only requires council to set the title at its next meeting with no mandate on the form of that legislative action. Neither charter, code, or state law prohibit setting a charter amendment ballot title by resolution. There are also timing constraints. Our normal ordinance process could not meet the county's September 5 deadline. An emergency ordinance wasn't necessarily appropriate under the charter's limited definition of emergencies. Additionally, council has used the same resolution method for two charter amendments in 2024 without issue. As for the protest period, while shortened, the resolution expressly provided a protest opportunity consistent with state law flexibility. The protest process permits a protester to still effectively challenge the ballot title prior to the ballot certification deadline, which has happened. Now, as for options for council, one option would be to deny the protest. Council can find the protest invalid and uphold Resolution Number 14 and certify the ballot title as adopted on September 2. Alternatively, council could sustain the protest. Council could adopt an emergency ordinance setting the title. This approach potentially stretches the charter's emergency powers definitions and potentially introduces additional risk and delay. Staff recommends that council elect Option 1 and deny the protest. Council acted lawfully, provided a protest opportunity, and met statutory deadlines. Upholding the protest and shifting to an emergency ordinance is unnecessary and could create complications. Denying the protest tonight protects the voter's right to see the certified question in November. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Attorney McDermott. Any questions from this hearing body? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you. I understand that because the petitions were certified on the 26th, we had a limited time period to get it on the ballot, for the title, for the ballot certification. Who sets the timeline of when petitions are submitted and certified? And what would we have done if we needed to pass this by an ordinance in the same period of time?
That's a good question. I want to defer to City Clerk Carlisle on that.
Yes, so under state statute, that's where we, because it's not clearly stated in our charter, we would, that's, there's a statutory deadline that anything needs to be filed 90 days prior to the election. And so the circulators didn't even file in time to have their full 90 days. So there is that deadline to get it in by the 90 days prior to the election. And then there is a, I believe, 25-day opportunity for us to verify, and then it would come to council at the very next meeting. So essentially, that is what backs it right up to the certification date. So it's a flaw that we are working on to, for just the timelines. And this is what we ran into last year as well.
And one thing, the clerk's office in connection with our office are working on is an election code, manual election code, potentially rewrite for council's consideration to address some of these underlying issues.
Because as a home rule municipality, we could set that to be different.
Okay. Yeah, I have some concerns about that. But just one more question. I hear your statement that the protest included in the resolution does not include process concerns. If a citizen does have concerns with our process or thinks that we're not following our process, what recourse do they have if it's not the protest?
So that's a good question. Potentially, what someone would be able to do to challenge our process would be potentially to seek an injunction with the district court or pursue other avenues with the district court to review this process. There is a procedure under state law that could be utilized that would require a filing within five days of the legislative action that certified the ballot, that set the ballot title. So that deadline would have began to run on Tuesday. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I think my question is for the city clerk on the 20, 25 days. Where is that? Is that codified somewhere, or is that just documented internal practices?
That's under Title 31, state statute.
Oh, that's state statute. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any further questions by this hearing body? Go ahead, Member Wright.
City Clerk, you said that the petitioners didn't have 90 days to get the signatures. Is that what you said? So how long did they take to get the signatures since they didn't have the full 90?
I'd have to calculate the dates of when they filed. But they didn't, potentially, they, they could have taken 90 days, but because of the deadline of filing before, 90 days before the election, they, that was abbreviated for them.
So they, they were fully aware that they would need to take less to meet these tight deadlines?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Member Russell?
Thank you. And so this is for the city clerk, too. They were required to turn in the petitions when they were due, had they taken the full 90 days. So like, the date set for them to turn it in was established by the 90 days, not by what?
By the 90 days prior to the election, not their 90 full days to circulate.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Member Prang?
Thank you. Question for Deputy City Attorney. So just to clarify, one of the assertions in the protest addresses the, the options that were given to council for, you know, potential language to set the ballot. However, council has full authority to set the ballot title as they see fit. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And we addressed some of that on Tuesday night during that process.
Okay, thank you.
Member Ward?
I'm curious about the delineation between the process for making the charter amendment and the process for initiating an ordinance, and how they differ. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? You've covered it briefly, but I'm more concerned with the areas of our code, which would cover each, or the areas of state law, which would cover each, and where they might be different.
Sure. So in our charter, there are provisions regarding the setting of an initiated ordinance. And that speaks to, let me open it. It gets 46 and then 47, I'm sorry, 45 and then 46. Because Charter Section 45 says that any proposed ordinance may be submitted to the council by a petition signed by registered electors in an equal number to the percentage herein required. And then that next section speaks to what those percentages would be. And then that, and this was quoted in the protest, that initiated ordinance shall then be published in the same manner as other ordinances. So as the protester argues, essentially, such, we would be setting the title by an ordinance when it's a proposed petition, a citizen-initiated ordinance. Our charter only really addresses citizen-initiated amendments in Section 8, and it doesn't speak to a specific process on, further than that. Under Section 8, amending the charter, it says that amendments to the charter may be framed and submitted to the electors through petitioning the council or framed and submitted to the electors by council on its own initiative. In accordance with the provisions of Article 20 of the Constitution of the State of Colorado and Section 14 of this charter, nothing herein contained shall be construed as preventing the submission to the electors of more than one charter amendment at any election. The rest of our code doesn't really get into the process, and we have been relying on state law regarding how to go about setting the ballot title.
Specifically because this is a charter amendment. If, if it were an initiated ordinance, we would be able to lean on the municipal code because it's covered in the municipal code?
Well, we would, if it was an initiated ordinance, we would be relying on both charter and municipal code provisions. Yes, sure.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I'm just following up to that. The, when we, when there's an initiated charter amendment, and if it's successful, how does that get codified or charterfied? Do we, do we do, have an, do we do an ordinance? Like, what has been our practice in the past, and then we've done some of these?
Yes, no, that's a great question. So after the election, should, you know, should the initiated amendment pass? We, there is typically, I believe, we do, I'd have to double check what we did last year and how we adopted it. I think it, I want to say it was by ordinance, but I would just don't need to double check.
Okay, because I, I mean, part of me is wondering if the ordinance-related Charter Sections 46, for example, would apply since we adopt charter amendments by ordinance. If that, if that's been our practice, is if the step to adopting the charter amendment is to pass an ordinance that is only authorized if it's, if it's passed the citizens, then wouldn't, you know, an ordinance is a part of the process, so wouldn't 46 potentially apply?
That's a good question. I know when we analyzed it last year, because we ran into the same timing issue. We had made the decision, or we'd come to the conclusion that we were still permitted to set the ballot title itself by resolution. I will double check what exactly the procedural method we took after the election for codifying the two passed measures. But the way Charter Section 46 speaks to this, it specifically says, if the petition accompanying the proposed ordinance. So we've interpreted this language under Charter Section 46 to specifically apply to those initiated ordinances.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Wright?
Thank you. Deputy City Attorney, bear with my questions here. It's, it's an understanding process. If this council decides to proceed with an ordinance for this title, and that's all it is, is a title, would, would we be stopping the will of the people because there would not be enough time to get this on this year's ballot?
So the way council would be, we would recommend council proceed, if they were to decide to go to, put this on the title through an ordinance, would be through an emergency ordinance. And the way that process would work is we would have to declare what the emergency is. We do have a draft emergency ordinance that is in the packet. And essentially, the emergency would be to ensure the will of the people and the petitioner's rights to have this on the ballot, given the time crunches that were under. The way that would work procedurally, council would take a first, would look at this at first reading tonight. Under our municipal code, we do have a specific process under EMC Section 1-8-8 on what a protest looks like for a ballot title passed by ordinance. That allows for a protest to be filed by 5:00 on Friday. And then second reading would follow by setting a special meeting on, for Monday that would resolve, one, any protests, should they be filed on Friday. And then, two, the second reading of the, of the emergency ordinance.
Okay, and then what about that 30-day waiting period for any ordinance to kick in?
Under our charter, that doesn't apply for emergency ordinances. What does apply is that an emergency ordinance needs to be, again, there needs to be that emergency issue, but the council needs to adopt an emergency ordinance unanimously.
Okay. And then, in my own research, I was looking at other cities. And when it comes to citizens-initiated type of petitions and setting the title resolution, every city that I was able to pull up has done exactly what council did on Tuesday. I'm not an attorney, but I want to confirm, is this what you have found yourself?
I haven't done a complete canvas, but we have found that other cities do adopt it by resolution. City council, so we have a special, the procedure by which we call a special election. Under our charter, that can be set by either ordinance or resolution. So we do kind of look to that as well, as support that in matters of elections, a resolution can be an appropriate procedural vehicle.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any further questions from members of council? If not, I, there are two options for tonight. There is the option to move to deny the protest. There is the option, as well, as we just heard, to sustain the protest and cure with an emergency ordinance. Those are the two options I see for tonight. So, Member Ward, go ahead.
Should we hear from the protester, Mayor?
I think I heard from the protester at the beginning of the meeting. So I'm not sure if there is any additional information. If, if members of council would like to hear from the protester, again, we can, but. Member Noonan Camp?
I have no opposition to hearing if they have a response. And we're here for this entire process. I'd rather do it than hear it later. I don't know if it's going to change anything, but if they have a response, I don't object to that.
Thank you. Mr. Kaplan, are you still online?
Yes, I am.
Is there any additional comments you want to make after the presentation that we just received?
Yeah, I'd like to make one comment, which is, I think, you know, with respect to the Deputy City Attorney, I think, you know, I cited the legal authority in my protest for, you know, why I thought an ordinance was the appropriate approach here. I, I heard the Deputy City Attorney say a couple of times that, you know, an ordinance is not required under our municipal code, and therefore, we're relying on state law. But I didn't hear the citation to, you know, where in state law. And I'm looking at Colorado Revised Statute 31-2-210, which is Procedure to Amend or Repeal Title. And in Paragraph 1B of that repeal charter, excuse me, not title, Procedure to Amend or Repeal a Charter. So if we agree that we're relying on state law, Paragraph 1 of that section, it talks about proceedings to amend a home rule charter may be initiated by either of the following methods. Goes on to talk about petitions. And then in Paragraph B, it says, an ordinance adopted by the governing body, and the ordinance will also adopt ballot title. So I, you know, am reading that again to talk specifically about an ordinance as opposed to a resolution. I don't see anything in that section that is talking about amending that provides support for the position that a resolution is appropriate. So I think, you know, looking at both the state law and our municipal code, which both refer to an ordinance process, you know, that is the support for the position that I took in my protest.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. Anything else? Deputy City Attorney, see your light on, if you want to respond?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to address that state law, so it's CRS 31-2-210. So similar to our charter requirement under Section 8 of our charter, where a initiated, where an amendment can go either by council referral or an initiated petition, state law mirrors that same kind of requirement. So the full text of that statute, Section 1, is, Proceedings to amend a home rule charter may be initiated by either of the following methods. Subsection A is what we're dealing with, which is the filing of a petition meeting the following requirements, and then they're listed. And then subsection B, which Mr. Kaplan was citing to you, is the alternative, which is an ordinance adopted by the governing body, submitting the proposed amendment to the vote of the registered electors of the municipality. So those are just the two different methods. We've always been, and we've talked about this also on Tuesday night, dealing with that, this section, 31-2-210, subsection 1, subsection A, because that deals with the citizen-initiated petitioning process at issue here.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Attorney. Member Russell?
Thank you. And so basically, part B is if the council themselves decide to put it on the ballot and not the citizens putting it on the ballot by petition.
That is absolutely correct. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions from members of council? If not, can I get a motion from a member of council? And actually, go ahead, Member Prang.
Do you want the motion now?
Yes, I was just, there's, there's written language that I received from Deputy City Attorney McDermott in terms of whether or not we wanted to deny the protest or whether we wanted to cure with an emergency ordinance. So I could read the two to begin with, and then we can just decide. And I'll let you make a motion based off the two that I read.
Okay, that's fine.
Perfect. So if we are looking to deny the protest, the preferred wording would be, I move to deny the protest filed against Resolution 14, Series 2025, because the protest challenges council's legislative process rather than the ballot's title wording and is outside the intended scope of a title protest. And two, council lawfully set the ballot title by resolution consistent with CRS 31-2-210-3 and subsection 31-11-111. I further move to direct staff to certify the ballot title for the November coordinated election. If we're looking to sustain the protest and cure with an emergency ordinance, the following motion should be made. I move to sustain the protest and to introduce and adopt an emergency ordinance setting the same ballot title as in Resolution Number 14, Series 2025, with findings that immediate action is necessary to preserve orderly election administration and the electorate's petition rights. So I'm sure that you remembered every aspect that I said there, but if you like, I could cure my.
I have a much more simplified version, just if it comes to you, then we can clean that up.
Sounds good. So I'll just let you move, and then we can set the wording. I could just repeat the wording. Go ahead, Member Prang.
So I move to deny the protest based on the language provided by Deputy City Attorney that you read just briefly.
Okay, thank you very much. Member Prang, I was looking to see if this was going to pop up on the screen, but.
I didn't, I just, I manually clicked that, just so, and then I can do the second, and then I can send it for a vote.
Okay, did you just want to audibly?
I'll second.
Second that, okay. Any further comments from members of this hearing body? Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
I would just say, I, I. I would just say, I, I um, the, to the extent that the protest helpful, I think the, it would be preferable to set it, set a ballot title by ordinance and to have a longer um, a longer time to, to file, to, to a protest period. Um, if we can figure out a way to do that, I would love to do it, but to me, the um, the state law precedent and the timing that we have laid out, it looks like it makes it impossible to do it by ordinance and not being required and also being impossible um under our timing rules, uh, I'm supportive of of denying this, this protest with the provision that we should figure out a way to extend that period for the protest period.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Uh, Member Noonkem.
I feel similarly. I'm going to support the denial of the protest tonight, but I feel, um, after hearing from the protester and hearing from W City Attorney, I feel quite confident that we have obeyed the letter of the law. I don't feel great, or I don't feel that we've actually adhered to the spirit of the law, um, in the sense of we uh require, we provide this protest period when we do it by ordinance, if it's an initiated ordinance, but it is true, the protester said, that it, it initiated amendment to the charter is much more significant. And so the fact that this is then when we are not providing that protest feels really incongruent to me. Um, so I would really like to see us make this change if we have some authority under our home rule charter so that we can not only, I think, you know, um, provide space for citizens to provide their input if they see fit, but also does it, citizens have consistency and predictability? Because if we're doing, you know, different processes for different things, kind of, as we see fit, it's very, very hard for them to have predictability. So again, supporting the denial tonight, but pretty dissatisfied with the process that we've run.
Thank you very much, Member Noonkem. I, too, will be denying the uh, the protest tonight, um, uh, for, obviously, the reasons stated, this fall outside of the scope of our authority, and it does sound like we follow state law as well as our municipal code on this. Uh, but really quick, I did want to just thank all the work that went into this from our Deputy City Attorney. You put up, there was a lot of time and a lot of effort that you put into this over the past day, uh, day and a half on this, and City Clerk you as well, the, the, the fact that you guys ran quickly on this and made sure that we had the information we need and also gave the protester the, the, his right to state his case. Uh, I just appreciate how seamlessly that uh, that flowed in such a short amount of time. So thank you very much for the work that you did on this. Uh, Member Ward.
Similar to you, Mayor. I, I, I'm very glad that we were able to give the protester his due process this evening by meeting and discussing this. Um, after hearing everything and reviewing all the materials, I am compelled by Deputy City Attorney's argument that this procedural argument is outside the scope of a titling protest. Also concur with Member Noonkem and have already had a conversation with the city attorney about, about this, um, and about refining some of our elections procedures, because this is not the first time we have found a bug in the system particularly related to citizens' ability to engage in direct democracy in this city. So, uh, with that, I, I do want to thank Deputy City Attorney for her work and guidance this week. Uh, we had a robust conversation on Tuesday prior to ballot title setting, um, and uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With no further comments, can we please vote?
Let the record show seven ice.
All right. Thank you very much, members of this hearing body. Uh, there is no need for consideration of a major uh emergency ordinance. And with that, everyone, we are now adjourned. Everyone, have a good evening. See you on Monday. Have a good night.